People right at 5:30 and would like to call our joint workshop to get, um, joint workshop meeting ordered. Um, just a couple of quick notes, housekeeping notes related to the agenda for tonight since this is a shared workshop between council, the planning commission, and EDA. Um, we do have a very large group tonight and we also have a pretty constructive timeline. We need to be adjourned at about 6:45 and transition down for a council meeting at 7 o'clock. So, just a couple of housekeeping items since we've got a large group and a tight timeline. Um, we are going to manage the agenda pretty tightly and we are going to try to as much as possible limit discussions specifically to lot sizes in this particular zoning district, the MXR1. Um, so comments specifically on that please. Um, we do have extended invitations to interested developers that have expressed interest in this topic in, um, in recent terms. Um, if you have, if you are a developer here this evening, a couple of opportunities for you to participate in the meeting. We do have an open forum since we're at the beginning of our session. There's a standard open forum and you are welcome to address, um, the council, planning commission, and EDA at that time. Otherwise, we are going to transition into a presentation with Donovan. We'll do questions of the EDA and the planning commission council first and then open it up to a broader discussion including developers. I'll try to manage the time so we make sure we give them enough time to include this whole discussion. If you have some opening comments that you want us to hear right off the bat, I'd welcome you to make those comments in the opening floor. Any questions before we get started? We are on video this evening.
Just a comment, and so just the distance and space so that everybody can hear. Use your outside voice.
And with that, I'll call our meeting to order and I'd like to invite everyone to turn it on. And we will open the open forum if there's anybody that would like to speak. Just want to stand there if you are. Again, outside voices are appreciated. You want to reserve comments until later in the discussion, you're welcome to do it there. Anybody else like to speak over the floor, Karen Morgan?
I do have a letter that was submitted, so I'd like to read that. It says, "To whom it may concern, I am a developer in Minnesota and I have done several detached townhouse projects in the metro and surrounding area. Currently, I have a project under discussion on the first fairway at Chisago Lakes Gulf Estates. The project has 32 detached townhouse lots that are 50 feet wide. They were all sold in 30 days. I have similar projects in Inver Grove Heights with 40-foot wide lots and Blaine with 54-foot wide lots. I have seen the market shift from builders looking into this product for people 50 and over and it now has grown into the hottest product on the single-family home market. We are finding millennials that no longer want to take care of a yard or remove snow, but what they do want is a home with an unattached wall and the ability to have a three-car garage in some cases. I have proposed a development that I have taken to this, I have proposed development that I've taken to the city for approval at Shadow Creek Stables. I am unable to attend the meeting tonight, but would be happy to meet with you. Thanks, Todd Christensen."
All right. Just a quick round of introductions if we can and again, we've got a short meeting time. So just quick name, position within the city with, um, 35 feet. In a block, State Health Center. Anybody from State Health Center?
Joe Moore.
This is Robert, EDA.
Kevin Miller, planning commission.
Michael Kane, planning commission.
Justin Wright, planning commission.
Susan Young, planning commission.
Paul Yard, planning commission.
Senator Stinkfield, city council, for EDA.
Uh, David Flatter, the developer with Center Homes.
Ashley Del Sol, the author of Center Homes. Karen Giraff, I'm the deputy city clerk and if everybody could talk louder, that would be great.
Ryan Goodman, city engineer.
Agent Burns, Golden Lake.
And Lanatsa, Forest Lake, Gary Chambers.
John Dove, phone services.
Thank you, everybody. With that, we're turning over to Donovan for this, uh, presentation. Do whatever you need to do to get comfortable in the room and to see, excuse me while I turn my back, but, um, thank you.
First of all, thank you all for coming, taking your time out, especially someone on short notice, attending our workshop. Um, I believe the real intent here is to get some agreement, rough agreement, consensus, something, a shared understanding of between, um, these appointed governing, uh, legislative bodies that deal with development. This is focused on MXR1 zoning district. The one that, for, um, you know, with our expanded, you know? Um, for our expanded, um, areas with 2040 comp plan, um, for the single-family zoning district, single-family attached. The MXR1 is basically the developer, development mode, the workforce for our new neighborhoods we're going to see. Um, the, uh, the purpose in, also in redoing or amending the MXR1 standards is so that they become consistent with the, uh, the comp plan standards, um, which includes up to six dwellments per acre gross density in that MXR1, low median density residential district. The existing, um, single-family, uh, standards for MXR1, 15,000 square foot minimum lot size, 80-foot wide lots, 30-foot front setback, 10 side, and 30-foot rear setback. Yet MXR1 also does allow up to eight attached units for each lot size. There is 7,500 and, or minimum lot width just based on minimum dwelling width, type two beach. Now, that's currently at the 3.6, um, dwellments per acre gross for the, uh, this, for the MXR1 zoning district. As I mentioned, um, this can be up to six, 3 to 6 with a low median density residential in the future for that extent. And just as a, as a background, all these standards are for lots served by flooded water and sewer. The, um, this is a large table, slightly delegable as a screenshot up there, but within your paper package, you could see how it's, um, arranged for all our peer cities. There's 10 other cities that the city of Forest Lake endmarks the standards to. And basically, you know, Forest Lake is on the large end of these, the minimum lot size, about third of an acre, 50,000 per week. With the peer cities, it goes down to, you know, Ramsey, about 4,500. And then also for lot width, it goes from 80 down to 40, you know, within this range. And then, um, there are a few cities that I've been receiving comments on from developers of this is where they see, you know, or perhaps where they like to see Forest Lake going with standards. The cities of Plymouth, Lakeville, Pottage, Brooke, and Rogers. Um, and then with those, we do see, you know, it's more smaller, um, lot size, there's an area in both side setbacks. So that's just, you know, that's just kind of where we, we can see ourselves currently. And, um, I'll also mention within these standards, um, the, we're required to, you know, zone land to accommodate a, uh, certain amount of households in the 2040 boundary. Um, there's no guarantee that the, you know, properties will develop this like this. Um, simply the zoning code needs to accommodate this. I mean, zoning code is not a promise that, for instance, a property can yield 6.1 miles per acre. Um, especially, I'll note that even within the 3.6 dwellings per acre, this third of an acre minimum lot size with the eight attached units allowed, um, any, any developer who's soft to get anything close to that maximum allowed density was attached units in. And within the intent of the zoning district, um, I still think that that should be part of it as well as providing for some housing choice, some, you know, range of affordability. Um, so I'd like to keep that in mind for decision makers here on trying to retain that, that intent of the MXR1. The, um, I'd provide some images to also make it clearer better in your, your paper copies of some developments. So, um, this first one here has 70-foot wide lots, 25-foot front setback. This happens in Lakeville. Um, the same development, we see also more of a, like, large street state. The 70-foot wide lots, 25-foot setback. You know, believe this one is in that, um, you know, has that seven-foot, uh, side setback there. So you have those homes. Um, also this one comes courtesy of the city of Dayton. Um, we have 55, 50-foot wide lots with 7.5-foot side setback. And again, the same development, you can see the road houses, um, again approximately with a 25-foot front setback. Um, with both of these codes, they do have that, uh, separate setbacks for both, um, garage where structure. Um, with the idea that both these, where there's a 30-foot garage setback, a 25-foot structure setback. Make the garage space a little less prominent, um, for those. And then also, again, um, there's just more homes with a 25-foot top front setback, 70, 70-foot wide lots. And then, um, this is, this is down to Lakeville as well, um, with 25-foot setback. And these are all similar, um, developments where you have, um, sidewalks on the same side of the street. Uh, again, here's, here's one image of this seven-foot side setback as well. Uh, I'll just note that in previous conversations with, uh, Chief June and the fire chief, um, it seems that, you know, his, his break point was at 7.5-foot setback. That's the areas that, for 15-foot structure, this is a big structures. Um, you can see that in some places, it's just, um, you know, that's something I consider kind of a right line. Um, and then also, um, what we're also seeing is a lot, um, in all these other, um, narrative, um, communities are twin home standards. Um, in this, in this one, there's about a 22 to 24-foot front setback to occur for this twin home. And the twin home standard, uh, it's not specifically a twin home standard, but within the MXR1, um, there is that 7,500 square foot area lot and no lot width. So this could be, something like this could be replicated as twin home, but, you know, currently that's a 70-foot setback for this MXR1 zoning district. So I would, um, really just provide this as a background. Um, to my staff now, I did present a proposal for what I saw as potential, um, you know, bit of that minimum lot standard of 70-foot wide lot with 30-foot garage setback, 25-foot structure setback, 10-foot side setback. I don't present that as a recommendation, I think it's simply, that's something to get the conversation going. Um, that's something I guess when I was a graduate teaching assistant in 9:00 AM, you know, undergraduate teaching sessions where nobody left to talk, so I, like to throw something in there for the prompt discussion, maybe this page will need it. But, um, and, you know, even judging from some of these images, again, this evening, you know, the 70-foot, you know, wide lots sometimes seem kind of narrow, bunch, bunch, you know, row down, down the street. Um, it was a little different standard there with that, that 70-foot setback, but, um, nevertheless, this is kind of what other communities are doing, they've adopted. Um, and with that, I'm, um, I'd like to pass it back to, um, Mary Ray to, um, get any discussion opened up in the zone.
Thank you, Donovan. So let's open things up, um, and start with questions or comments from council, planning commission, EDA, in no particular order. If anyone has any questions, clarifications, and then ask if, if the conversation started. Otherwise, also interested in this initial reactions, perspectives you might be bringing on the table tonight. Um, this is a working session, really just to gauge temperature and also understand, um, if, where are you at with these ideas? But then also what additional information that you want to see between now and decision day? And so if there's some questions or studies you'd like to see, that's kind of intention, get those on the table as well. Just open it up, there's.
Yeah, I've got a question. I'm sure this is heading somewhere, I just don't know about it. When you've got, um, council, this puts together, there's all the artists. Are there guidelines for developers to put in their rooms so these people have some place to go, right? Are there guidelines for a developer comes in?
Certainly, there are, there are part dedication requirements. Um, those can be taken into account. 250 dollars per lot is being moved up, actually a small part or creative part. Uh, based on the circumstance, the park transportation commission makes a recommendation for hash or improvements. Um, and it goes across, across, across.
Okay, so it's not part of the development plan that you're establishing, but in the center of these developments, yes?
Every, every project's different. So there might be, it might be adjacent to another park, um, you know, the area and the city believes that, that, well, that, that park will serve the new residents. But there is some, it's either land that's in the development or funds that are been directed for improvements elsewhere outside of development to improve another park to serve that whole population.
Just to get a little more color on that question and topic, historically over the last next number of years, there's been a policy of accepting part dedication fees in either our development parks. Um, that mindset has, would say, has shifted a bit. Donovan, do you have a timeframe of like how long we've been accepting fees in the local park land?
It was about two and a half years ago, I think, then we had the deal, uh, debt was paid off. And so the park trade or lease commission did a shift and realized that they now can be flexible. And so, um, we were talking with one developer, you know, developer now even said yes to one, your concept land, a part of it. You know, it's in these sorts of situations, but it, or sometimes we put on the edge, so one part can serve. On the other side, the belt is a larger contiguous, you know, plot land for a larger part.
Just a comment as a broker, and we didn't have more affordable homes in there. It's denser, but we didn't search for families because only the yard, like I said, there is a process there. And this is the second factor.
I guess I'm just, I have questions that I'm going to want some data on. Um, Donovan, what I call the, the horse area that the Arabian Standard Red Alameda Road, that area over by the high school. Um, I'd like to know the density of that area it is. So, because that is an example in Forest Lake of, of a higher density area. Um, and I did drop you there just now on the way here and it's a long street like, so that's, I mean, it's, it was basketball and, and and football back and forth that were in the streets. Fortunately, there are some health sites and dead ends that, that I, I just would like to know the density. Um, the number of households that we need to, um, be allotted for the 2040 plan. Under our current rules, how many houses could be built and what is our gap for what we need to have according to that boundary? So, so if, if we don't have enough space to put the number of houses, what is that gap? And in your, um, your, your staff report, you also talked about affordability. And so what I would like to know is what are our current, um, affordable housing numbers? Um, how, how many do we have at 50% area? What do we have at 80% area? And what do we have at 100% median? Um, just so that, that I can judge need a little bit better. And then when you quoted the Hugo, is that their current? Well, again, I drove around there this weekend and a lot of that new stuff looks a lot smaller than what you got there. But I may, may just mean that I'm not judging the, the proper, or something I can do. Okay, I appreciate that.
Is it possible to put up a map of the community council 240 plan of the land area that they're talking about? What is proposed to be the MXR one? Hold on, I've got that vision going on.
And, and if, that's the, that's the right part we're speaking at, right? Not current zoning, but future MXR1 zoning, is that the right context, right?
Correct. So the, um, you know, and basically also mentioned that there is a maximum amount of attached units you can have for the MXR1. And this is a future man use plan, it's adopted by council in, uh, last year. And so the, kind of the, the land areas is a low median density residential areas. So you can see, I mean, there's going to be a large, real large expansion. Currently, it's about 16% of, of all the, you know, the zoned areas. Um, but then we have various, uh, you know, within the southwest with the expansion and all these areas are, um, over on this, especially on this kind of, you know, east side of 61, all the newer areas that, uh, had been, you know, guided codes, low median density, that's okay with me.
And the example, um, I'm trying, I'm trying to gauge apples, if there is apples to apples comparison. So if, for example, we're looking at, um, let's say Ramsey as an extreme of the school. Does Ramsey have a smaller, and maybe you don't know until you look at Ramsey, what, do? A community's managed this by having a smaller percentage of their land use as in this designation? Um, or are we talking, is there a kind of a percentage of the city or type of development? Is it really apples to apples as far as size? Part of what I'm getting at is I'm wondering if there's, is there an opportunity to do an interim step where you break out some of what is, you know, currently, you know, stale yellow and is sizable? And do you have some opportunity to break that up where you might change the standards or set, set, set sections, but not the whole thing? Uh, is there an interim step between where we are now that we might want to be based on area of success?
Certainly, I mean, with those, those, uh, the, the areas that will come down, uh, one, it's, it's three to six dwellings per acre. So some could be 30, at least 30, some could be the 40, so it could be, it could be graduated based on, you know, the correct area that it's in.
But it is for the whole district, it's not.
It's for the whole land use area, but the next step is to divide, is the districts are create district standards. And so there could be a, you know, an MXR1, um, higher density in a district that the city decides.
Or, uh, chair your art.
Wow, that's easy. Um, I think that the discussion on lot size is interesting, but I really think we should discuss lot width. And the street scape, what do we want for these houses? I have no problem with shrinking, you know, and width of the lots, but I think, you know, total area of a lot is the wrong thing. It should really be the street scape, if you look at page six here, that, that, Donovan, you're slicing our fact open here. Um, it's, it's a nice street scape in page six where you have a little bit of a building and then you have the garage. You contrast that with page eight and you have garage and a front door entrance. You don't really have a street scape in my opinion. So I really think we need, what do we want to see as a community walking down the street or driving down the street? I, I have no problem with whatever the lot width, width is there on, on page eight, but maybe it should have been restricted to just a two-characterized width. And then we would have had some room and some space out of, out of front of that building, similar to what page six had. So I really think we should discuss the street scape and what else we want to use the lot. And then it's a very simple formula to determine the square perimeter.
Great suggestion. I'm at topics, just open up any of the perspectives. If you're questioning us, we need to do something different, we could hold back for this one. Let's talk about that question, uh, the street scape and lot width. Lot comments.
Um, again, it's from the wholesale standpoint, the man use for three-car garage is not because the lots are responsible. Like, for the outside, you gotta hire your grand to leave and third stall for your boys. So when you're, uh, smaller lots, you need a car garage, then it's not that space satisfied for them.
Do I need a three-car garage or do I need a three-car area where I can get by a little two-car garage, as you said?
Yeah, that's not very helpful.
It's toys. It, it, it's the toys. It's, in, in Forest Lake, they got the boat and they got the jet ski and they got the, the snowmobile and, and it's, it's, it's the toys. Um, my daughter recently bought a house in another city and she went away from lots that had such a short distance between the garage and the road because she couldn't have any friends over. Um, when you, you can only park two cars in the driveway, then, and you're not allowed to park on the street, then she couldn't have friends over. Um, and it was, it gets a little challenging. Um, so I think that while folks want smaller lots, they don't have to take care of and shovel snow from. If it's a, for a family, um, yeah, they're going to want the three-car garage for the stuff, but then they're also going to have to, want to think about, about Thanksgiving regarding.
Other thoughts, opinions, specifically to street scape and the rest?
I guess I'm, all of these are, are pretty there from a tree perspective. And with a small amount of area between houses, um, and small lot sizes. Michael, you may be better able to help me out with this one. How are we going to be able to handle that for tree canopy and roof spread?
Um, I saw some of the pictures of a little closer, you know, like seven-foot property line. So I think that's like 14 feet from house to house. If you were to put a, a tree in there, it's like, it's almost going to be on property line. Uh, because if you're looking at some of these big trees, they have a, a 40-foot canopy, big trees, you know? So that's 20 feet on each side. So once that trunk gets up there after 10, 15 years of growth, it's going to be hanging over all homes. I'll grant, seven and a half feet, seven and a half feet, most is 15 feet. But that's still, you start talking about windows with lead grouts, fence, and I'm going to go right to the fire right in part of the, the, you know, this stuff, I use it on the power. Uh, they, uh, you're, you're going to need roadie ants either. Now, and if you have, uh, go back to your, uh, the three-car driveway, you know, 50-foot, even 60-foot tapper, where are you going to put a tree? And then the birds coming out, so a lot of, you know, eventually, bringing some off the driveways, sidewalks. Is that where we're at? Is that where they are? Plus, in between the holes, the rest of the side garden, all the locations, brackets, lots. But I don't think any, we should not get smaller than seven and a half feet. On the width. Seven X.
Question, maybe it's put in there, there's. Now preface it by, since I became, also I hear a lot from my demographic. Not gonna say more than that, but my demographic of the community, that they're looking outside the forest. Because they like these single level, smaller, kind of slab on grade, you know, so they're kind of chatty cat. You know, and quite young, attractive and affordable for them. They don't wanna move on to, you know, the single family, you know, seventeen to two thousand square foot home, larger lot. And they're fairly expensive, you know, and I hear a lot about, I don't wanna become homes poor in my neighborhood. I wanna be able to downsize and make a lateral move initially, or maybe, you know, come in a little underground without doing a whole front hall. And so my question to you is, when we're talking about the, you know, the six homes per acre, that, that particular, you know, kind of rooming. What is typically your target audience in most homes? Yeah?
PDA, which is very well, PDA, we talk. That is exactly what I've been using for a few years. I've been going Rammer Calm before, basically, before the nine hundred. Paul has actually praised a lot of products that, it's not easy to do this stuff. But that's what my buyers want, that they don't have boats and toys if they do have a cabin or end around the problem, you know, so you wanna push it. But the same, the brand, if you're not gonna have credit, that's their negative feedback or problem is problems. They don't want the means to be like, they don't want that. It's more common with, and with our associations. And that's something I mentioned then, I'll, I'll, it's, every association has these places, like, amazing, phenomenal, on photo, right? But I sent a bunch, I don't feel that. I tried this, but in nine ninety three years, the first project we did, so I said, if I go through some of the true love, I don't know if they'll chat up to me, like, probably set it up. They look great because the homeowners association does a great job of putting clear on those spaces. And I always look, people from that buy from us, that would be good work and it's like, we focus on keeping places to look for. And they do look great. And one thing I know you mentioned about the space streets and stuff, we always looking for Coleman. They Coleman works out, they have a boat, they have a shape, you see that always. Well, I look at this and it looks, it doesn't look like a public works in a visionary perfection, but for, but for, it's a nice straight lines. But for my customers, they never go and spend five, six million dollars on this, on a street road. They don't want something that's still beautiful. Cause they're kind of a nice house, you should have come out of the house, it's been thirty years, three years kids, took their gun. And they still want, in the area, they, they want, and they're good at, they know the hospital, they know the doctors, they know the stores, they don't wanna leave. But if there's nothing here, they have to go to the lane, they have to go the north, perhaps they have to go some, obviously that's doing that. And if you don't start operating that, my lot's only, if you want to buy, it'd be quiet. Like, then you get, and that home is worth two thousand feet spacing main floor, most of the finished space, it's not everybody finishes it. They can live on their main floor to the center. They don't, they can live there till the day they die because people don't need for the answer, they don't need for the long, they don't need for. The lower levels, when their kids come back to visit or the Christmas space, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be. So it's a great kind of thing, I'm sure. The other developer that I've come across, that is that people are built for. And we know the market for it. My site that I bought eighteen years ago, that I'm in arts here, I bought it because it's a perfect site. It's got a greater area of view, a hundred, it's on the six acres, but it's only about six acres of the wall. And I mean, he was, now my use, that, he was both a back, of course, even towards that. They have a blockout, they're down with a caddy, I can run with the speedworks down the road. Of course, it's, it's a dome, it's very easy. And you're not worried about the front yard. That's them, they don't have cars, like, they have any of these pictures, I'm seeing some of those. I drove through their, and it's in the pictures there. And nobody's parking this, we know him about it because most of those buyers have one or two cars, there's a lot of. Those that buy, I mean, there's people that just say, what kind of you done had? Or they have one car, they're with their home, or they have a cabin, and you sell one, you're saying, everything on the street. I saw one car on the street out of a home in my home. I saw twelve that were, one more home, that's certainly, and most associations keep that, it's been a, a boarder ride, but they cannot go cap board on the driveway. So the client, the customer I'm going after might be different than maybe once you type one, tell, your guys on this stuff. But what I go after is that empty house, that must, because they're gonna be the last home before I place it. I want that, so we can do a lot of molding and shaping, so we go after, your are pretty darn bad. We do not, yeah, we're good.
One question, I think.
Is that we, the, the, the back for the purchase of the home and the association things? Do you consider these affordable at eighty percent?
Affordable? It's, it's extremely affordable. But you know, if they come out of a house that they lived in, they have a lot of equity typically. Most of my buyers come in and it is a lateral move or they may have to get a small loan or something. But a lot of people can sell a home, especially the market the way it is. They get a lot of money out of the house, so they can make that, like, how much of a loan it is for. And it's always, it's usually pretty reasonable, I think, for a house, probably a hundred and fifty dollars a month, that's on personal, you know, all insurance. So you take that out, you quit, a year dollar, but that's affordable for most people. And one thing I mentioned in one of my letters to you guys, the night Angel A's come up, where they repaired the way that the snow pile guy had been ripping on the side on the boulevard and making that, so it's been, have somebody get their grass back and so. So they forced the snow pile, they didn't come up by these, no tractors, they had poles on them. So they go all the driveways, look there, it's a snow bowl, it's attached to tractors, they don't care, the yards, you know, then it's a side. And it also spreads out the snow, so you have three piles, like, the others, really, associated, some developments, and there's snow pile, pile high. But the snow bowl is blown up, so. Associations have worked really good to do a better job for homeowners that live there. And homeowners think should they, they got great community. And then you go through, you see, they are great places, they tell their value. And they sell, even during the bad market, they'll season selling days. So, who's it sold, two thousand and seven, they keep, keep it selling. Was especially share, was selling hours. It's just, there's a market for it, baby boomers, we're getting, we're getting permanent, and they're, I have this in my stuff.
Okay, Mark, second question.
I'm very sympathetic to what Paul was talking about, the industry, the street scape. It seems that Black Death directly always with this idea of NSB, that the market places accept. Plus, you know, the industry that rise to the market place your house, so it's that a little bit. It's very frightening, but I'm really sympathetic, and we should be, yes, for the former, you're talking about. But if it's currently starting to set, side yard, they, they set that. And controlling the animals that sit on that side, the market place the same. I love that these side yards, I can say that, but that flows in the market place so well. I wish we could reinforce some of that, and you can, I just don't know.
I was mentioning that Coleman, I think if you have a good designer, you can do both.
Well, far better than the street, street house.
Right, I mean, if you wanna follow the wetland path, and have, you know, follow the areas, you can, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a straight line. At least you try, cause that's what the market wants, they don't wanna live on straight, straight up, so. You can do, I think, most, I think most developers are all to do, but you know, what's gonna be best? Cause you gotta sell, you still have to sell. If you have something that's boring or dull, you're not gonna pay as much, or be, compared to other products, so you're not inventive, creative. You're not, you have to be an artist, that's a development, that you create something that's a little better. I can think of a good job, and then what is, I'm a developer, I feel, it's true for artists, I think, I think you know.
Other questions, comments? Just weighing in a little bit on, that was a question asked to the street scape. I do think it's important, but I think however we manage the overall development design standards, the past two years, they part of this on just the overall development, yes, if the yards are smaller, either side yards or front setbacks are smaller, then we have to provide some greater focus on common space that we have in the past. And to the extent that we're able to encourage interesting design aesthetic rather than straight lines. Whatever we can do in the standards to encourage that, I would, you know, I think there's a, a way that we can creatively, you know, get those smaller smaller footprints, but I think it also forces us to be more, more creative with the design standards. So that that smaller footprint is complemented by something more else. If we don't require that, then the market, it's over and some developers will do it, some developers won't. Donovan, how do we, how do we, how do we manage that? So going from the, the lot size to the overall standards for the development, is that something that is is that a negotiation development by development? Or is there already, how do we as policymakers that help people, that's not so much what's happening on the individual lot, but what's happening on the overall? And most of the, yeah, it's different. Yes, right.
Certainly, I think, I think one of the things I've got to with conversations like this, is quite uncertain. And some of that can be obtained through the tax papers. Do you need, I, it's currently the city, this is for all zoning districts, only I stand for a lot, in the area. You're also ready that the concrete laws. There's no language where the intended is of the code and it's like being the D E D, there's this language around what the entrance should be. But some communities take a, they approach, maybe a maximum percentage of garage space. When they do that, they, they recess the garage space. They provide urban streets or fair connectivity, so you don't have long stretches without, without intersection. For, for walkability, I think, you know, as I mentioned, the city is taking some turn toward, you know, now accepting the, you know, park areas. I think the idea is accept the land plus enough room for, it's not land, but it has money for improvements as well, it's part of, part of the aging. There's a wide range of tools to actually, you know, introduce those high element that they achieve. But Velver's wrong, there's small lot sizes, but I agree with you, Mark, the design really didn't matter a lot, really. You know, it's like life, but it's not like, I think design can really, you know, take care of it, really hide that density, whether it's street back or, or park.
Donovan, if we just say in the zoning code that you can do six dwelling units per acre. The, I have two hundred, two hundred, two hundred, there's one hundred and twenty for, for sale, so they can put, if you just say you can go up to six dwellings per acre, they can put seven hundred and twenty houses there. There is no real requirement at six dwelling units per acre for for saying that there has to be a car or an anything, is that what cut down on the number of dwelling units? Per acre in, in the entire subdivision? At some point tonight, I'd like Brian and Donovan to talk about, if, if we go in this direction, we are going to see a very large number of dwellings in the city over the next five years. Where are we at on water especially? Where are we at on leasing? Where are we at on our fire department? Because if you, if you look at the cost of a dwelling, it's usually about one and a half times whatever you get in terms of gap or per city. So, and that's for a city that's in like the middle of the range of the region, we're really at the low range. So how are we going to make sure that we've got enough dollars for the rest of the city tax payers or rate payers, which are the water, to be able to provide services, police, fire, water, all of those?
Certainly, that's, those are, those are very concerns. And that is something that, first of all, I'll say that, you know, the zoning code, again, is not a promise, this is potentially a maximum. Within that, the current three point six two million per acre, a lot. Just like three, since we had about two billion per acre growth. Like I mentioned, there's a future concept plan, part of the, in the farm, that was the, 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 mid two, John, like, hundred and three billion per acre. You know, where, you know, where, you know, there's so much wetland, wetlands in, in folks' lake that this, I think it's thirty six thousand, you know, sixty maybe acres that were actually upwack. So I mean, there are lots of things that really, they're countervailing, you know, conditions, you don't allow any, any, no condenses.
I'm just looking at, at this area, south of ninety seven, around sixty one, pretty flat, it's all farmland, there's not a lot of weapons in that area.
So, in some of those areas, yeah, it, it, it may not be similar to what we see in the, some are, there's floodplains, flood plain there. You know, actually, if you're able to make a team during preparation of the twenty point plan. You know, which was probably the biggest piece beyond the policy decisions, was the underground, you know, policy, underground infrastructure plan. So it's water, store plans related to, you know, pipe sizing. So it was, it was a really big effort to actually make, make sure that in the future, as projects came in and pipes, sizes correctly, you know, so that your proper depth, for, so that, it, you know, wouldn't get, wouldn't get behind any of that. As far as the safety forces, you know, piano trip, that's something that's an actual challenge, and I think, you know, council has enough information to make a decision.
You have to do that in the back.
Thank you, Eric, I'll go stand up and maybe a little easier. I've built, because I work with a lot of developers, I also work with partners, also the city attorney, and so I kind of see it from both sides, that whole side of the question. One of the things that you think about flexibility, you already have a tool in your code, just planning to develop, I don't know how much, when you use it for, sorry.
Quite good.
So, so you're familiar with that. And, you know, one of the things that I've noted in recent years, as developers try and create creative places, they use that tool. So you look at the standards, you're moving in, in a direction towards smaller lot sizes, reduce setbacks. But then you have this tool for flexibility around wetland, around open spaces. And you're, as I reviewed, you're oriented that that's all those considerations in it. So as a backdrop, if you think about trying to get that really special development, that's a tool that we would like to use. That tool is used in your neighboring community that apparently has been used in several areas. So I just, I wanted to put that as a backdrop, because we don't have to solve everything in, in this zoning tool, but it's already been voted. That virtually every development I've worked on, the last mega, is, is one, but why? Because they're the trade off. Try the open space, provide the trail, provide the amenities, and then you get to the eye. It does, obviously.
So my name's John Dowd, so I'm with the public services. So I'm involved in the H D project, but I did wanna give you a little bit of context. So go back to the Ramsey, fine, which is a question I heard you ask a little bit. That's actually a project being done by Capstone Homes. I represent the landowners that are selling the land to Capstone. And I just throw some general numbers out, which may help with the context, really kind of tagged on to what your attorney was talking about. The project being done is P U B, there's seventy eight acres total. Yes, there are about a hundred of the two hundred and seventy eight lots that are forty foot wide. There are also a significant amount of them that are sixty five foot wide, and then there's some that are fifty five foot wide. They have a park, which the developer is going to improve. They're going to put eight acres of virgin timber, which is almost, I don't know, it's cut in the early sixties, it's the best we can make in Canada. And it is flat for me, and that is what it is. So the overall density is more like three point four, even with this three point four usable at the, and Donovan did a remarkable job getting all this stuff together, at forty three fifty six square feet. That would be the smallest little lot Ransy's allowed ever to have. The previous ones were more like fifty five of its square feet, which is the north side of the same project done seven years ago. So hopefully that'll give some context, because I think to tag on to both gentlemen, the corner's point, the market is what people also don't really talk a lot about. There's the environmental, there's what do you as a council and planning commission see as a benefit for your city? And then there's what do the people really want by? And if we, if Capstone did 78 acres at 40-foot wide lots, I don't think they'd be very successful. They don't think they'd be very successful. They have five or six different house types. And affordability, you know, even a 40-foot wide bill lot, I believe, you don't quote it, because it's pulled back from memory. Built 1100, you might know this better, maybe 11200 square foot. $270,000, $280,000 of a very, very, very low end for a one-level living. And if people have a chance to do some other kind of style and climb stairs. I'm sick of climbing stairs personally. I don't live there anymore. So, and it really was a collaborative effort between the planning person, Jim Gladenhall, although it's still water, Capstone, the developers there, me, I have a background in landscape architecture, I've been in it for a long time. And so we really came up with something really cool. And Donovan and I were beginning to do that within P U D, but now it's abandoned. But there is something about that, and there are sites that absolutely fit that bill, like he was just describing. And there's other sites where people are going to want big single-family houses. That's what people really want, if they can get it. We did a site in, I'll take it to the street, we did a site in Woodbury, up in the northeast corner of Woodbury. And I've lived there for 25 years, I've been in a number of projects there. We were trying to find a way to solve this exact problem. How do you get smaller? And at the same time, still keep the Woodbury feel. They're doing a small, single-family site, they're 65-foot wide lots in 60s. It was, to this day, I think, one of the few single-family detached, real detached products that was five associations. So when you lived there, in 2004 to today, they set a ton of them in line. Cut your grass, pile your driveway, city does the streets. Those houses have appreciated at least as fast as every other house in Woodbury. A lot of them were tandem garages, because, yeah, if somebody gets their druthers free, they can drive wide, sure. But can you put the boat at the back end so a part of the drivers can front, sure, absolutely. So the market and the builders, the creative builders and the creative approaches to these things will solve some of those problems on their own. It's the end of the day, the last thing in the world. I ever want to experience a grand, I'm sure anybody else who's been in the business in 2007 has had a whole bunch of stuff that you can't sell. That's a real problem for the city and for everybody else. And so that's kind of the push-pull. And so I think with the P U D code and with minimums, Jim Gladenhall would not go down to 40-foot wide lots in Ramsey, which is 43.56 square feet, unless the overall density and unless they got other things. It was just this, and it took two years to negotiate this stuff out. It's going to be a heck of a project when it's done. And they'll be by style from five feet down to two and everything in between and through the Woodbury project. Yeah, some of the street sketches would be tough, to describe it the way I hear you guys talk about it. But at the same time, they're going to be going to live in there, shit, wouldn't it be other one? And in that same Woodbury project that I referenced earlier, we also were doing some identity stuff on the other side. And because of density swaps, and I'm not at paying anything here on foot and all, but I always want to try to give something back. I was able to give a prime 12, but eventually we ended up giving 24 lots for habitat for the area. It's still a townhouse project. And there are 24 families living in Woodbury, it's still a school, wouldn't have been there otherwise. And just by the city working through density swaps and grants and all that. So it is a very powerful tool, but the minimums have to be set and it has to be something enough for both sides. Once you get down the street, they're happy, probably want to fare you, hope people irritated, maybe that's a fair thing. So what is it?
Kevin, just a question or comment to stay hidden here?
Again, but thank you for asking. I've watched the conference.
Let's continue, just keep it open, open questions, comments. And also, quick time check, we've got about 20 minutes left. If there are pieces of information that you would like gathered into that on this long list to provide, and to reach this topic back, the planning administration comes with us, great company, it was a custom.
So I'm David McSenter-Holmes, and I'm here tonight, I was hoping to kind of hear what the city wants. I mean, we can get into all of these details, but I think in some ways, say, what does the city really want? Because then if you come in with a P U D application, you might be able to get some of those things. But kind of more the broad visioning of what that might look like. Because as a developer and a builder, we can be super creative, sometimes more creative than people might want to. John just talked about the city of Ramsey wouldn't go down below 40-foot lots. Well, I tell you, they did, because I have 30-foot lots in the city of Ramsey because it solved the problem that the city really had some very specific, this is what we want. So I said, okay, here you go. What about this? I haven't worked, but it was, it was a setting of vision. Instead of setting standards, and then I have to fit the house into those standards, it was setting a vision or a goal of why does the city want to allow smaller lots? Well, is that the market? Well, then if you don't like what is coming in, then you can just assess that. The other thing that I just wanted to just weigh in a little bit here, and I'm not, I hope the city engineer doesn't get frustrated with this, but all of this design stuff sometimes is driven by other things outside of how it's going to look. We did a coding project, but we had to do, we had to have our manholes be at the center of the road. And then at your road terms, you have a bunch of manholes along. So it made it much more expensive, so we walked away from the coding project because of engineering. And I trust why the engineer did that. The other thing is the density, you're not seeing a whole lot of attached townhomes to get up to eight plus units per acre. Because right now, building code requires fire sprinklers for attach. But for twins, you don't need to be attached. So there's other things outside of design standards or layouts that are important and will still try to settle these decisions. And so just, it's just some things, and so that's why I would, I as the builder or somebody working with land or would rather have a kind of a vision or a goal that might help us to get that, and whether we stick to standard J O D or P U D to help accomplish that goal, would be more beneficial from our perspective, as we bring in an architect and the land planner and others and with some creativity, sometimes we can make those things, sometimes the land doesn't. But it's really helped, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I think the city is at this juncture where a fair amount of people want old-fashioned suburbia with a wider lot, less density. And then we have retirees and the younger people, and I'm getting, I'm into retiring one, that are starting to think about a smaller lot, a smaller, and I really think that we need a lot of input to get there. I'd love to hand you visions, but I don't think we have what that's all about. I'd rather a single vision.
And along that note, along that note, allowing variety. You know, you don't want 1,000 acres of 40-foot stable level that we're about to have. Some places for large lots, some places for small lots, some places for density, so.
I would ask the question, are there communities that have gone beyond just the zoning standards and the lot standards that have painted a strong vision that, not that we're going to copy that exact vision, but who's done a good job of creating that vision? What are some examples of how to do it if you understand that vision? Again, we're not, we're going to pick a force like we're, it's not that, but.
So, yeah, so a couple of thoughts on that. The city is blaming only because they've done so many P U Ds, you know what the city council and planning wants. Because you can look at the previous P U Ds. So that's not, maybe not a good one, but the city of St. Michael passed a zoning code that encourages and allows smaller lots in exchange for open spaces. And so that's what they wanted, and we just approved the project in that code. Even though it was zoning, that matched the zoning, there were some negotiations about what that looks like, what the open space is, where it's going to happen. But they had that, if you want density, if you want it all more than eight, smaller than 80-foot lots, which you can, and what we're looking for is open spaces. And so that was, those two were examples.
Let's go back to the P U Ds.
It's not technically a P U D, it was a zoning code, but it was a P U D with predetermined negotiations, things that the city wanted, hopefully.
Well, fucking tournament, that's exactly what it is.
Yep.
I would, it's, it's, oh, that's just, like, do we, do we, I guess, I'd ask the group, we've done a lot of P U Ds in St. Michael's, like, do we have common themes and the ability and the goals that help with that picture of a vision? And is there some value in putting that together, I guess it asks?
Well, it's, 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 it's burning hot.
That's what's on your spot. And my question is, the P U Ds that we've done recently are, well, we can't build on this wetland, so you have to let us be more dense. Or you, and to me, the P U D is sort of about what's in it for the developer, what's in it for the city. And because you can't build on wetland, isn't that what's in it for the city? Because we can't use that as recreational space, except for dog hunting, and then doing the really angry, because.
All the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they just go like that.
The animals, yes.
Wait, yes, yes. And so, so when we think about the vision, and I, and I've got to look for what St. Michael did, is it the exchange of density because you buy a property you couldn't build out? Or is it density for a public piece?
I would say, if I knew what you can, I would have had a conversation around P U D criteria. What does that look like, what couple of dependencies is, or it was, maybe it's not the kind of vision that, you know, whole vision that you want, but it's more like, you know, trying to give some restaurant approach, you know? You know, satisfy these criteria, if we're looking for these, if you can find those, that will, you know, give you flexibility.
I know I'm not supposed to talk about this, I was told this is another part called setbacks and streets. And I do think that creates an issue though for these P U Ds, they don't go, people necessarily go together. You think about that, just for example, the current right-of-way, if you have a 40-foot right-of-way, basically, you have to go six, six feet, that's a little long, which is, so it's 40 feet. You take 40 by 7, that's only 100 square feet of area. Then another 40-foot, or the setback from that right-of-way, I have another 20, so it's 2,000. And then you have the side yard, and then you have the rear yard. Also, you have 8,000 feel to setbacks for a lot, though. There's nobody you're going to ever get that's six feet, it's great, or five inches. You can't even get 40 without a house. So those setbacks need to change, or all this stuff's kind of a waste for everybody because you're not allowing with the setbacks, you're not even allowing me to help me for a house at the three or the four inches break. And someone must, I mean, most private buildings were outs along three inches break. But I can't get anywhere near that with a setback set, it's a city building. So it's a combination, there's nothing set in stone, they can definitely pass them a look at on a individual basis, but I think you can't be stuck on those standards, or you're never going to change what you're doing.
When you say, when you say setbacks, are you also here, you mean in the street yet?
It's true, I've been on the street. Right, I've been a base in the area. My best projects are reported mostly, they're all sort of 28, 29 miles street they have. From that point on, it's anything from like a 200 by 200 space for the right-of-way. You have the side block, they give you enough space, they might, customers don't need all that driver space. They don't have all the 300. It's, again, it's, it's all from the back, and I just want to say that there's no back there, it's a spin sense. And the way, you make the street so wide, you, that one thing, we're just going to have one thing. They are using houses part of that, a lot of this area, and also there's no back there after you. It's where people want back there, but you might be considering, you don't want them down the street. That's why you want to go with lots of kids. So I think you want to narrow that, that's your training more between the citizens. Anyone, so many departments, they both have been going through, but right-of-way, it's narrowing that down because they know that's their community service. And that's where I'll train this, that's water treatment. I might probably go on a census office, I might say to a landlord, actually hate here, it's too much because of the longer driveways, the wiring, and the wider streets. And that's squirming so hard, the area you're leaving, and it's also like, it's too shady to set down. 45 minutes of water, you have to clean the, you know, the streets, so.
Let's, let's, let's park the lot, actually, I was just going to another point. I think your point just made it that they do need to get it, so.
Nice.
Council has it.
But again, we all need to, I'm the advocate, it depends on the situation, it's strange, that's it. So it depends if you have a public issue. To keep narrowing that down, where do we figure that out? It didn't happen this year, it was last year, but year before we had a commencement. So there's consideration that we have about public works too, and those are all considerations. The other issue too, if you rent houses, if you get tired, I think, would you have to have a wire or a firewall on the side? Well, mine, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't mean that, I really, I'm different, this is the case that I don't, my side yard is actually large, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a side order, it's a, it's a, it's a. But yeah, you're right, what the fire can do, is they make some policies that are very heavy.